To figure it out for themselves, and neither us or the city will. And if we do it on behalf of the city, the city's going to have to compensate us for all losses associated with that, which may not be the most comfortable position for you to be in, although you're continuing to ask us for that. That's the situation that we're dealing with now because when we first saw this in April, it took a couple of months for us to make a decision, and then you make yours, and that's all understandable, it's the way government works, and we're moving in the right direction. The question is, how do we handle this transition process in the best interest of the public? And how do we handle your presentation now that you're technically incapable of doing it? If we can now and focus on that and figure out the best way to crack that, I think we're in better shape.
And so I appreciate, you know, the board's willingness to, you know, listen to us. I mean, this is what I'm saying today is basically the same thing that I said in June when I, you know, made my public statements, you know, I indicated then that I didn't believe the city was able to go into this business for this period of time while we do this transition. And so I appreciate the willingness for folks to look at this again. I recognize that from my point of view, I think the 24,000 residents and all of the visitors that utilize the city and that bring us recycling is worth you taking the time to look at accepting this material and using, you know, your valuable space to continue to offer us those services. And that while I do recognize the benefits of composting, I think it's at this point in time more critical to continue to serve the 24,000 residents than to roll out a new compost bag program where compost is readily available by bag already in this county at multiple hardware stores. And so there isn't as much of a critical need to meet that, I think, as there is to meet the critical needs of us having a place for our recycling to go at this point in time, you know, for the next six months.
And just remember, Mayor, we have 160,000 residents in the 20 towns, and we have to take care of all of them. So not only, not only your residents, but also all the other residents in the county of Ulster.
Do you think it would be of any value for us to meet up at your transfer station and look at the potential of it? I remember when it was in full production. I remember that back and forth.
I wasn't alive yet, Charlie, so.
All right, man.
Charlie.
I thought it might be a good idea, and well, it's up to you guys, you know, you decide.
Well, my last comment would be, see if we could tweak these six months from trying to get emergency permission to dispense with bidding would be the first step.
How do you propose to educate your public in the next six months?
So one of the key aspects that we believe needs to happen is an actual mailed bilingual brochure that would go to every residence. It's generally designed already, and, you know, they would get it in the mail and not just to the owners of the buildings because we often have times with issues with tenants, and so it would go to every postal address in the city. That's the number one outreach. The second is literally, the bins will, again, be blue bins, but they'll have different colored lids, and so the new recycling can will have a new different color lid, most likely yellow, and so it would be very brightly colored. People will be able to tell that there's a difference. And then the stickers on the actual bins will say, you know, cans, bottles, glass, with pictures in both English and Spanish, and also then paper cardboard.
And when do you plan to send these educational materials out?
You know, it's a, for us, as soon as the totes are basically delivered.
So you're going to wait until they're delivered to start educating the public?
At least with the mailing.
Theoretically, the public could be taught before.
Yep, they could, but, you know, as a former recycling educator before I became mayor, the attention span of the public is often short, and if you tell them to recycle a new way, but then don't give them the product to use to recycle the new way, they will disregard your instructions. And then two months later, when they actually get the new product, they won't remember how to do it, or where they put that piece of paper, or where they put that piece of mailing. And so it does have to be, generally, you know, the articles that will be written about all of this is actually helping. The articles that will continue to go out every time we hit one of these milestones, thankfully, the Daily Freeman does a great job of covering every single move we make.
Oh, he's smiling. Look at him.
Hell just rose over.
And so, you know, that helps, but we really do feel that, you know, we are one of the only communities also to actually have an inspection officer who goes out and works with residents. And so not only do we do the mailings, but do we, and we do the kind of the public pieces as well, we literally have someone that goes door to door when people are not recycling correctly.
Steve, you do know that as we speak, there are many of the blue totes out there that do not have instruction decals on their lids. You do know that, right?
I do.
And that may have led to the contamination that we had to deal with early on.
Well, I do believe that we, you know, we handled the contamination pretty well, and that, you know, from single stream recycling in our conversations with Tim and Charlie is that our single stream recycling was some of the cleanest single stream recycling that you guys received. It still wasn't great, but still some of the cleanest. And, you know, we all recognize that the reason communities moved toward single stream recycling is that it increased recycling rates, it made it easier for residents. You know, going back out and separating it again, you know, still is going to cause issues. Like, just some of our contamination isn't just that there was dirty ketchup bottles in single stream, because when we do dual stream, there's still going to be dirty ketchup bottles. So like, we have to recognize that there's still a lot of work that we have to do, we all have to do as the agency and as the city, to remind folks that, you know, even if you're sorting it, yeah, it will have cleaner paper, and the paper's worth a lot of money generally. And so that's good, but in the end, we're still not going to break plastics. We may still have broken glass. We still may have some of the other traditional contaminants, lids on glass jars. You know, we have to still work on that, and I think that that is going to continue to be, you know, this education outreach is still going to be beneficial for that as well. Not only is it going to help people do the, split up their streams again, it's going to remind them what is and what isn't recyclable, and that is the other issue that we've dealt with, is when we were single stream, you know, the information and materials that we were providing were different somewhat than what the county was promoting because they have a dual stream plan. And so the materials that are recyclable are different. And so it really got confusing. And so I'm hopeful that through this effort, you know, with the recycling coordinator and educator here at the agency, you know, we will have a much more, you know, straightforward working relationship. You know, I remember when the agency used to give my residents recycling brochures, and they would send home the mailings to residents to get them to recycle. And like, those days are gone now, it seems, but like, that's, those are the kind of partnership that we would like to have with the agency again someday.
I'd like to speak to that, though. I gotta take exception to that. You're talking about the days of dual stream, okay? It was very, very clear, and I just want to be clear because there's some things that you said that are just inaccurate. First of all, the reason that single stream came about, it wasn't because it increased recycling rates, it had nothing to do with, it had to do with the hauling.
Our recycling rates went up 15%.
Hold on a second. Hold on a second. The haulers promoted it because it saved money on the street. Now, when you look at it holistically, all right, on the back end, a lot of that ends up in the landfill, all right, 30 to 40% of that material that comes in on a single stream plant ends up in a landfill. Why is that? Because of the contamination. There's even cross-contamination within the plant itself. Those are factual numbers, okay? So when you look at it, while upfront, I agree, you do, those recycling rates do go up, but when you look at the thing holistically, from start to finish, your rates actually go down. As far as, as far as the educational component, you said it was much better back then. I gotta take exception to that because that was dual stream at that time. I was just at a stakeholder meeting statewide, okay? And at the statewide recycling meeting, there was a woman from Monroe County that said this educational is very, very difficult. She said, I live in Monroe County, I have three different haulers, and the three different haulers take three different types of recycling, okay? That's an important note. Three different haulers on the same street take the different types of recycling. Why is that? I don't even know, I'm not sure if you even understand what it is. But the reason they do that is because these are going to different plants and to different markets, okay? So if you're close to Buffalo, for instance, there might be a good market, let's say, for the black plastic, because there's a processing plant, Ottawa, Canada. Here there isn't, okay? So you can't take this because the trucking doesn't work, the hauling doesn't work, the economics don't work, right? So what they're trying to get at with this statewide educational component is they said it's impossible to try to educate the public because it all depends on where this is going to go, where these different products are going to end up within the state. So they came down in agreement, they said there's probably six items that we can probably agree on statewide from a state's perspective, how to educate the public. So when you talk about brochures being handed out, that was easy in the time of dual stream, was much easier. Now that single stream came about, it all depends where it's going, because if you contact county waste, what's going in the Court of Albany, that's different than what waste management maybe is accumulating, so.
I agree, and that's why I'm, that's why I'm excited to work with you.
I'd like to back up a little. We could discuss recycling education, but I'd like to, at some point, see if we can resolve at least our work for today and as far as we can get it. I have a couple of questions, mostly for staff. Do you think, and the board too, do you think it's a good idea, and how long will it take for you and Charlie and whoever else to evaluate the two really important things the mayor put on the table today? The most important one, in my view, is the, is their view that they can't, again, I have no problem with the fact it's going to take time, but there's a transition period, that they can't handle the single stream during this period. Previously, you and Charlie had thought that they could. I'd like to know whether you think they're wrong, or you think they're right, or you think that there's some timeframe or some other mix of things, or you can convince them that, you know, that there's a way to do it. I'd like to know what the answer is to that, and I'd like to know how long you think it'll take you to do that, and so we can decide whether we make a decision today or, you know, a future meeting and how we handle that issue. So if you can basically let us know how long you think it'll take to work with them to come up with the answers with respect to what they're, what they're saying today, because I just don't know what you think of it. Secondly, the mayor's put forward a fairly more detailed six-month timeframe. I'd like to know your evaluation of that, so we, so we know whether it's something we can rely on, or whether it's something that's got some hidden booby traps in it that are going to leave us pulling the bag down the road, literally. And those are the two things I'd like staff to help us out with if the board were to agree with that, and I'd like to know the timeframe is on that.
I mean, the first one's easy. I mean, as far as the value, whether they have the floor space, if you've got a space fifty, fifty like your.
Well, floor space, the equipment, the manpower, if they, we talked to the mayor, it's people, they have people that can move from one to another. These are, they're a practical administration, basically the whole shebang. They gotta be able to turn around the administration of this process within two weeks. And I, we need to know whether that's doable or not doable, because we don't want SSR building up anywhere, in my opinion. My colleagues may differ, but I want to know what the capabilities are, what timeframe they need, whether it's doable, whether it's not doable, and how long it's going to take you to figure it out or convince them otherwise, or it means yourself.
You mean at their own transfer station?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think, I think that's a viable.
What the capability is, yes, they, they, they make this point, they may be right, they may be wrong, they may not know all the answers.
Remember, before the RRA, that transfer station served the city of Kingston.
Well, I just, at this point, I want, I want to, our staff is the expert on this. They advise us before, during this, during the course of this consideration, they advised us at the previous meeting when we took the resolution, we made sure to ask them these questions in detail, and I'd like to know how long it's going to take them to figure this out.
And the other thing is if the city can push this forward a little bit.
Well, I would like to know that. Is this hard, fast, this six months? You have left out February and April, which I'm assuming you're combining months together to say, I need 60 days to get something done. You referenced the construction of the units themselves. Is there any way you can shorten that process using docks or some other way mechanism to be able to put these crates together so that you might be able to shorten this timeframe by one month? Is this hard and fast?
I mean, at this point, we obviously, as we've, I think, tried to get across, like, it's costing us a lot of money to do single stream recycling with your agency. I mean, I'm almost paying $100 a ton. So I want to get out of the single stream business as quickly as I possibly can because it saves me money. And so, you know, the quicker I get to dual stream, the quicker I get to $0 a ton. And so it's within our best interest, I believe, to, so this is what I believe is something that I can stand in front of you today and say, I will get this done by June, and this is how. The company that generally has provided all of our bins gave us, they believe that it's going to take four to six weeks to get the bins here once delivered. It could be four weeks. Four weeks is great. Six weeks is two weeks longer, and that two weeks added on could shorten this by, you know, we could get up to June first, just based on how quickly they can get the totes here.
Again, this is all for, I want to hear, I want, this, we can, we can continue the discussion, and we, maybe we should, but again, in the, in the interest of moving forward, I'd like staff to comment on that. My own impression, and you guys may all disagree with me, is that if we're going to shorten this process, it's going to be by having the city figure out a way over the last couple of months to actually start picking up the SSR itself, rather, I agree with Mayor that we're turning the battleship around here. I think it's a very worthwhile thing to do, and it ought to be done right, and if it gets done sooner, we're taking, we're taking risks, and I have no problem with that. Things take time, but they've also sitting on an eight acre land, a piece of land that may be useful at some point in the next few months. Again, I want, I want to hear from staff as to what the right thing to do here is for us. We can guess, or we can hear from them.
I agree, because we were led to believe that you had the land and the resources to get this done.
I wish someone would have asked us.
Well, if we were, every month.
Well, no, like, in terms of the staff reporting back on our capabilities, it's hard for them to report back without asking our capabilities.
So it is new piece of information.
We had, we had similar conversation a couple of weeks ago, and we don't, again, we'll move forward, we don't need to go there.
And we invite the staff out to be with us.
We're hearing what you're saying at face value, and I would feel remiss if we were to make a decision one way or the other without having our, the people that are the experts in this tell us what.
The other thing we could look at, with the mayor's expertise as an environmental, environmental educator, and our new person that's coming on board, if we could, I remember back in the 90s when we started all this recycling, and we educated the kids in school about washing out the containers and everything. And the kids were telling, pulling on their parents' legs, saying, Mom, you didn't wash that, you know, that ketchup bottle. And it really worked well for a couple of years till we stopped. When we stopped the education, then everything totally.
The parents come after you?
We go to all the schools. All the schools that invite us, we go.
But we should have a, you know.
And we get a, we have a full-time educator that goes to every Kingston State school. So we do it too. We do recycling.
Yeah, and that's what we need to do.
I have some more specific questions, because we're getting to, can you come up, can you report to us on these issues by our?
Twenty-sixth meeting.
Twenty-sixth.
December meeting, or even sooner if we were to have a speci, I mean, we're obviously running into some significant issues with respect to deadlines. So why do you think is the best thing to do here? Because I don't know about my colleagues, but I want to hear from you.
Well, here's what I say.
Are you comfortable now discussing, or should we give you some time?
I think you need some time, and I think they need some time, but the time has to be with seven to 10 days, because we have to vote on this by the 26th. We have a resolution in effect January 1st.
Or sooner, because the 26th, if we were to vote now, the 26th doesn't give these guys an awful lot of, awful lot of.
And I think a vote today is useless. We need some more information, but quickly.
Also, too, you gotta figure, too, if you want to start lining up trucking again, I already told them we're not taking trucking anymore for the, for the public. So if you kind of want to line all that stuff up again, then I gotta start unlining this thing.
That's why I was asking Tim, what are the negative impacts?
Somebody's got to line something in two weeks, either we've got to unwind what our expectations, whether they do, so.
Yeah, because you're not lining up the trucking.
Yeah, we got to do something.
Because right now, I'm going to the assumption that we're not, as I was given a directive by the board, December 31st is the last day, so that's where I've been operating on all along. I haven't been given a directive any other way.
What do you suggest we do?
As, as far as what?
Executive Director. Give us, tell us.
I don't think, I don't feel comfortable voting today, so we're looking at, what's today, the 12th, 11th?
12th.
Okay, that gives us, by my calculation, 19 days to figure out what's going to happen on January 1st.
Fourteen days.
Fourteen, the 26th is our meeting.
Okay, well, that's, well, or we could have a special meeting or something worse.
And that's, just so you know, if you're gonna, if you're gonna wait till the 26th to decide what you're going to do, I'm gonna have to give a public call, give them a heads up, because I'm gonna have to try to work.
Well, can you, do you want to do it sooner? Tell us what you think is best right now. You've heard their presentation.
I think you need some more information, right? I mean, I don't mind going over and seeing, and seeing what they have. I mean, it's, you have a truck that dumps on the floor, you pick it up and you put it on another truck. That's, that's what you're doing. That's what, that's what we do.
Not to say they do too, but they're saying they can't. What? I mean, we need to know what to do right now. What, what do you think is the best? Should we vote now? Or should we listen, should we?
No, we shouldn't. We shouldn't vote now.
What do you feel, what do you feel comfortable with? I mean, I can go over, I could.
My first thing is, if you go over there, work with, work with their technical people, figure out what their capabilities are, and either explain to them why they have more technical capability than they think, or explain to us why they don't.
I agree.
Green childhood.
There's two things. He has to do that, and they have to see if they can contact us a little.
The timeframe itself, I don't think, you know, the six months, whether it's five months or six months, if we're going to extend, I don't think it's, it's an insignificant amount of time, 30 days. I think the bigger issue is what Dave is saying, and I would, I agree that you should go with this gentleman and any other expertise you need to bring with you, whether it's Charlie or somebody else, and say, here is what you have. Here's where the trucks can go. Here's where the floor is, and this is how you access and get out.
Consider this, or, or not, or you can go back and say, right, we can't do it. There should be a meeting of the minds, and we should know what it is, and the public should know what it is, and then we can take action there. And the timeframe is, is tight. I mean, if it comes down to vote on the 26th, then somebody's gonna have five days to change their things around.
It is.
Two things I'd like to be considered, that if we were to adopt or amend, that be contingent on there being market, that we're at one person, we're at one purchaser now, and that any agreement we have is contingent upon that continuing.
Well, I was viewing it that they would just simply pay for whatever consequential cost we have. Are you saying that the agreement to continue?
If we don't have a way to get rid of it.
Then we don't accept.
Then the agreement is not, is camp, yeah. And secondly, that we do a new financial contract that says it's all pass-through, whatever the costs are, or pass through.
That has to be, because this resolution ends.
It would be in the resolution, he'd have to give us all.
Let's keep it at the tail end, yeah, and then what we decide.
We've got some work to do, so let's get it done.
And it's up to everybody now, because I gotta need, I need to know from the board what you're going to do, what you have envisioned, because I have to figure out all this truck.
We need to know from you, when you make an assessment with Kingston, whether or not this is viable or not viable.
And if it is viable, we need to.
And we need to know from our attorney, because we are an authority and we're dealing with a municipality, does that exclude private hauls?
Can we, can we, can we do it for this one measure of?
We need to protect the residents of Ulster County.
But to be clear for Tim, what we'd like to know is, do they have the technical capability to handle single stream in your technical estimate? And if they do, how long will it take them to do the things that they don't see right now, to, whether it's transfer personnel or building a thing or whatever? If it takes a month, takes three days, takes three months? How long is it going to take them to, to set up that facility so they can do the work that we're doing? That's what I want to know. Whether they can, whether they can't, and if they can, how long it's going to take. And it'd be especially useful if you could, if you could come to the meeting of the minds on it, but if you can't, we'd just like to know what you think.
Yeah, so I'll need a list of all your buildings in the city, city-owned buildings that have a 50 by 50 area that's big enough for a boom and a rest of the year to move around. That's what we have right here.
Correct, because the problem is they can't be any building, right? Because we have to be a registered transfer station, and we have to have a D C permit.
We'll have to check with D C on that. That's nothing to do with this.
Well, we don't, we don't put that at this table, but that's, my, my, my sense is that I want to hear from you, because we had talked about this before, and you couldn't have all the information we have now, and obviously we need more to get, I think we need more to get it done.
Remember, that building up there was permitted. This is not something new for that building and that transfer station. That was permitted.
Yeah, and so there's a difference between a registered and a permitted transfer station. There's two different levels of permits. You guys are a permitted transfer station, we are a registered transfer station, and there are different rules and regulations which we can look into with your expertise and technical assistance that you've offered, and so, so.
Where do you go, I'm hearing from Tim on this?
I think we need to hear from Tim in very short order. We don't have a lot of time here. I mean, the holidays coming on us, it throws a wrench into the, I don't know.
And remember that our 2019 budget is already in place and has got to be completely redemptive.
Tim's facing other prospects of not having trucking. He's gonna have to arrange all that too.
I've got a lot of stuff to, and I'm gonna be honest with you, you know, tomorrow, I'm not in, I have a pumping issue at home I have to take care of. Monday, I'm out. Tuesday, I'm out. Wednesday, I'm out. I'll be in, I'll be in Brooklyn on Wednesday at the Sims Recycling Facility down there. Monday, I'll be down in Westchester.
Can you delegate some of the investigation on this to Charlie, or does he have to be here when you're out?
No, he can, he can do some of that. He's gonna be down in Rockland on Friday. Maybe tomorrow he can go over, he can, maybe he'll go over tomorrow.
We could, we could, we could resolve to extend one, one month.
Well, that's what I, that's what I was thinking.
And if we extend one month on a month-to-month basis, and I wouldn't want to say, in this meeting, we're gonna do month-to-month, but if we extend one month, this gives us a little breathing time to be able to make these evaluations with the proper staff.
We think ultimately we're gonna have to, I think, at the 26th. Somebody's got, somebody's gonna have a lot of crunch to do.
Makes sense.
Especially if we were to deny an extension. The days guys.
So what do you think about a one-month extension?
I'll leave that to you guys. I was, I was, well, you know.
Are you guys gonna wait to decide that on the 26th? Because I, I honestly, I gotta know what I'm doing with trucking. If the truck doesn't show up the first day, then they're not bringing us anything, and neither is anybody else, because I won't be able to move the product, so.
Well, if we, if we decide today, we can give Tim the necessary time that he needs to be able to arrange for trucking, if that's the case. We can give relief to Kingston for at least another month to swallow all the information and provide the information we're asking for. And I think it relieves the pressure on this whole situation.
That's a very, I have just one question. Given everything that's been discussed today and in the past, what do you think is in the best interest of the general public right now?
What's in the best interest of the general public?
Everybody in Ulster County.
You know, because, you know, we're an authority, and we're, we're here to serve 182,000 people, right? 186,000 people, whatever it is.
But clearly, there's a particular issue in the, in the city that they're here for, and that we have to think.
Well, I, I think if you're going to extend it a month, you have to take into consideration the financial responsibility, how the authority is going, it's going to affect us here in costs. And so you have to add that in to, to the resolution, that we know pretty much that Beacon is going to start charging trucking.
Yes, I know that for a fact.
January 1st. We don't know what that figure is going to be, but it could be anywhere.
My vision is we're gonna just start to tail-end cost to them, starting in January.
Well, no, they're just gonna have to absorb the cost, the city.
We're gonna, we're gonna build and post-hack.
Are we still using our trucks? I gotta know that, too.
Yes.
If we do it now, if we extend it a month, it gives, can at least a month to look at[1656.29] If we do it now, if we extend it a month, it gives, can at least a month to look at resolutions. We have, we have end-of-the-month resolutions ending on December thirtieth. We need new resolutions, we need to give relief to Tim. I think we've heard, this is the first we've heard from Kingston directly.
On the details, yeah.
On details. This is the first time we've seen the six months, and there may be some significant issues here that Kingston's facing.
I generally agree with you, I just wanted to hear from the executive director what's in the best interest right now. I think, I think you're right, I think we have to do it, but I want, but he's got Oyster getting trucks up here, and he's looking at me like he's bringing a home through me, so I want to know.
Well, no, because I, I'm trying to, I have to manage the agency, and I've got a lot of daily activities, and if you're gonna flip-flop and move around, I mean, I just, just trying to tell me whatever direction you wanna go.
If you were sitting on this board, what would you do now?
The board is the, you guys are the policymakers. My job is to get the job done, whatever policy you guys come up with. That's my job.
But you're also, you're also the technical, you're giving us technical advice.
Yeah, and so if you tell me that you wanna keep servicing the city of Kingston for the next year, that's fine with me, and I will, I will move forward with that, but I need to know on my end, so on day one, when this hits, if I don't have a load of trucks out here, because you gotta understand, I deal with trucking issues every day. When I got people calling in sick, I'm moving people around in excavators, I'm moving people around in trucks.
Is Brian's proposal, is Brian's proposal the best for us to do right now in the general public?
For the general public? That's, that's a policy decision, that's up to you guys. That's not, that's not, that's not my job.
Let me ask you one specific question. Do you have enough trucks? Do we have out in the yard that we could truck the SSR to Beacon if we had to?
Every day? I gotta hire another driver. I, because I have a guy that has to run roll-offs, I got service to sixteen down transfer stations, I've got a guy that's running lead chain.
Well, I'm not worried about drivers, I'm worried about trucks. Do we have enough trailers to do that? If you had a driver?
But I don't have, I don't have the drivers to run it every day, though. I can't, I don't have enough staff to do that.
Do we, do we have SSR by the way every day?
Well, really, one's every two weeks.
Right now...
We come one week, and then we're off a week, and then we come one week, and we're off a week. We don't pick up SSR every week.
It's not an every day, I mean, they, they don't have enough SSR for it every day.
So we're only talking about the city of Kingston, because I'm still in the assumption that we're gonna, we're gonna keep this open for everybody.
Unless, I'm not under that assumption, unless council tells us that it's illegal. I see no reason to extend.
No, we're not keeping this for everybody, just a, unless I miss or something, I don't know, what's...
Well, Ken has said some things that indicate that might be...
It's a one-let situation Ken is coming up with, what if the other groups come in? But I think, I'm not under that assumption either. I think we're talking about Kingston.
If you're doing it a month, I mean, we, if somebody else wants it a month, then you've got a situation.
But you'd have to review their facility.
I was just gonna say, I think they're gonna have to...
The thing you have going for you is no one else has asked.
Right.
Correct.
This is the only question.
With some significant issues, I think, that have come up.
I think legally, if we deny someone else and gave the Kingston, then you'd be in trouble, but right now, no one has asked for an extension.
If someone else asks, we'll deal with that at that time.
Well, it's really a question of whether it's legal for us to pass a resolution in favor of the city of Kingston, for six months, or for a month, or generally.
Are we going for all municipalities, or are we just going for the city of Kingston?
So what did you propose that?
Mine, well, I think what the board is thinking is, to get us past it, we're gonna do it in the city of Kingston. Nobody, nobody, there's no enthusiasm at all for just reopening up SSR generally. They're, they're here with a specific problem.
Because I ask it because we get from municipalities, like from Red Hook and the Ryan area, so they're still out.
Yeah, we're talking, these are the folks who are here now, that might get, whatever resolution we're even beginning to consider would be for the city of Kingston.
And you want us not to rely on the public, you want us to do all the trucking?
Well, we don't know that. I mean, that's, you have to talk to Republicans, find out what, what they're gonna do. We know they're gonna charge as of January one.
Right.
But are they gonna provide trailers?
They will provide trailers, but you've gotta understand that there are issues that I'm dealing with now that they, sometimes trucks don't show up.
Yeah.
Okay, in which case, I gotta throw, I gotta pull a driver from servicing the, you know, the gardener. I gotta pull him out to get him down, and the gardener's gonna have to wait.
Starting in January one, either they're gonna deal with their SSR, or we're gonna deal with their SSR. Whichever, whichever way that flips, there's gonna be a problem for whoever picks up, either for us, as you're describing, or for them. I'd like to know who's got the worst problem, starting in nineteen days.
I don't know if that's them, I don't know.
They've stated, they've stated functionally that they can't do it.
Let me put it this way. You, you guys, the five of you guys, tell me what you want, and I'll get it done. Because that's what I do. I solve problems, okay? So, as an engineer, that is what I'm trained to do, all right? So whatever, this is a policy issue. So whatever you guys want, you just tell me, and I'll figure out. If that means I gotta hire somebody, I'll advertise tomorrow, and I'll get somebody on the payroll. And if that's what I need to do, that's what I need to do, but, but just, all I ask is, just don't keep flipping things around on me, because, because I actually, I have to run a day-to-day operations here, that when I hit the floor in the morning here, I've got personnel issues, I've got other issues, I've got a lot of things.
If we were, if we go a month, do you foresee not being able to do that? If we decide today, and we decide we're gonna extend a month, do you see a possibility that you could not get that done?
I'll figure it out. Whatever it is, if I, if it means hiring more people or doing whatever I gotta do...
And the board will stand behind that.
You tell me whatever you want, and you say, this is Tim, this is the policy, because that's what the board's job is, then I will get it done.
Okay.
But I...
Mayor, if we do this, if we do an extension, is that amenable to you?
We are going down this road, and we are gonna get this done as fast as we can. Obviously, anything you can do to help us...
What I would like to see is an extension for a month.
Month, one month.
And I would like to see the mayor and his staff back here. Now, we're gonna hear from you also after you make your assessments, because I think you also still have to continue to make assessments on their abilities to be able to do this or not do this, if it's a viable option or not, and we're gonna want to hear back, because we're gonna face the same situation in a month, and we're gonna say, do we extend it another month? Well, I don't know that we're gonna do that, do that. But if we can have, can you come and meet us again after this assessment is done? And then let's come to a meeting of the minds of whether this is the most, the best viable option or not.
And I think we need a comment from our attorney about the legal ramifications of, you know, if we extend it for the city, do we put ourselves in jeopardy with private haulers or something? So we need a legal ruling, you know, from our attorney to, you know, take care of us. Okay, I'm, so I'll move the resolution for, you wanna move it, and I'll second it?
No, go ahead.
Well, why don't you clarify your resolution?
Okay, so I, I, I think we should have a resolution that, I move to resolve that we extend to Kingston one month in extension, that the request be a one-month extension, all services provided. Of course, costs will be incurred by Kingston, or incurred by us and reimbursed to us by Kingston in that timeframe. And then in one month's time, we'll reconvene and reconsider in the resolution.
So to be clear, we're talking about billing after the fact for any unforeseen costs?
Correct.
Including, as Tim alluded to, the possibility of hiring people?
Correct.
But I need to know, because I don't wanna, I don't wanna give, if I'm gonna bring somebody on, and I don't wanna give somebody false pretenses, saying you have a job for the next four weeks, so.
Well, I wouldn't hire anybody yet, do we?
Yeah, can you get it done?
I need to advertise now if I'm going to do this, you know, I'm two weeks shy of this, now I gotta figure this thing out. I got two weeks to figure this thing out, right? So now, I need to get in touch with Republic, I need to see if I can figure out, hire more staff, you know, so I, I've got a lot of stuff I gotta do here, because now, on top of everything else that I'm normally doing.
So am I hearing you saying that you don't wanna have the vote right now, you might wanna have it done the twenty-sixth for the one-month extension, is that what you're saying?
That'll give us time to evaluate their ability to do it at their own transfer station. I think that's uppermost in this thing. If they can do it at their own transfer station, there's no reason for us to do anything, but I'd like to have that evaluation, because remember one thing, for many years, decades, that transfer station handled all of the waste from the city of Kingston, and I remember it.
All right, so would that be the resolution?
Okay.
Makes sense?
Yeah. You were there, you know.
Well, and we...
Well, that might be a moot point, because if I'm gonna hire more people, then you can just keep on doing it for six months. I mean, you know what I mean?
I know that we are going to hire more people, and as I understand things right now, nothing has really changed. The only thing that's changed is perhaps Republic doesn't have the trucking, or they haven't lined up the trucking.
I have not.
In terms of operations, nothing has really changed, and so you won't have to hire anybody, I don't think, for the next one.
Well, no, you understand, there's...
In the month that it takes to make this evaluation, and till we reach the end of that period, I don't see much change in operations.
Those trucks have already, they already been dedicated to some other facilities. You have to understand, we told Republic we're not taking trucks anymore, so they're very, we're very clear with them, because that was my direction. That's what I was told by the board.
That's what the motion was.
So I, that's what the motion was. The board told me that as of January first, so I would be setting everything up with Republic. They're not, so those, there's a shortage in the trucking industry, they have drivers, okay? That's happening nationwide. It just had a big sixty minutes.
I understand. So you're saying you need, you need until the twenty-sixth to be able to contact Republic, see what the availability is of their trucks or not, which would impact your ability to be able to continue with this SSR operation for at least a month.
Right now, I don't know anything until I start doing my research.
So we need that information, it looks like, before that.
So, now I'm gonna, just so I'm clear, I'm gonna go under the assumption that we are going to be servicing the city of Kingston for an extended period of time, and I'm just gonna use that term, because it may be a month, maybe two months, maybe six months, maybe a year, I don't know.
It's an extended period of time.
For an extended period of time, so I gotta try to line up this trucking, and if they don't, then I will be hiring more people, just so you know, because I don't, I don't have, I can't, I, I, right now, I'm scrambling when trucks don't show up. If it's a full-time thing, then I'm gonna have to have drivers, another dri, at least one of the...
Mr. Mayor, you heard, you heard what Tim said. We may have, we may incur additional expenses to accommodate you for one month. Are you prepared to help us pay for that?
Well, we're...
What I would like to understand, and as Tim, I guess you're asking him, is what operational changes is he gonna have to make? I would assume that once he looks at our facilities, and we have this conversation, and he looks at what he's gonna need to do, he would talk to the city of Kingston and say, in order for us to do this, I need X, Y, and Z. I don't have X, Y, and Z. X, Y, and Z is gonna cost me thirty thousand dollars, and I'm going to say to Tim, well, can't you use our driver then? Because I don't have the equipment and the ability, but maybe you could borrow my driver that day. So like, I think that the agency and the city should be able to work together to figure out how we can make this happen. I just think that, you know, I agree with you, like, I didn't initially think that the agency would be having any operational changes from when we were dropping off stuff on December twenty-eighth compared to dropping stuff off on January second. I didn't necessarily know that there was gonna be any changes in staffing at the agency level, so.
See, I don't know that either. I don't know that either. It's like, it's like, it's called Republic. I mean, you guys just sprung this on me, so now, I have to go to Republic now and say, are those trucks already dedicated to another facility? Because that's under their assumption. So if they've already, if they're already dedicated now, because that's the direction I was told...
You mean Republic's trucks?
Republic's trucks, they're already dedicated to somebody else, and January first, they already set up a contract with company X, Y, and Z to haul their drivers, then I may have to use our own drivers, okay? Or I may have to contract that.
I understand, you made your point, Tim. I think, you know, I think I understand your point. We should probably get this information, let Tim call Republic and see where they stand with you. They're gonna say, yea, or nay, right? You're gonna call them up, and they're gonna say, sorry, we're booked. In which case, you gotta get back to us with some emails to let us understand what the situation is with Republic. On the twenty-sixth, we come back here, and we entertain a motion for a resolution for a one-month extension. We still need the information for making this assessment on the plan.
Yeah, that's still true, if you need to decide that they can do it.
But, but Tim's gonna be out, he's going to Buffalo, he's going, whatever he's doing. But, you know, we have a lot of crunch time between now and the end of the year with people not on staff. Let's give Tim some opportunity to call Republic, number one. Get us that information by the twenty-sixth.
Send Charlie down.
Send Charlie down, go over there, make an assessment on Kingston's viability, and then on the twenty-sixth, I think we'll be in a better position, given that information, to make a decision on a one-month extension, not a six-month extension.
I'm gonna throw this out here, right, and usually I fray from any policy decisions, because it's not my role. That's, that's you guys, but I'm gonna, I'm just gonna say this. Constantly changing the mind, or changing the direction is difficult for me, because I have a lot of things going on, and I have to move a lot of personnel. So if we're going to give them a one-month extension, I would just assume give them a six-month, all right? Because if I have to go through all this trouble of lining trucks up and hiring another person possibly, that's a lot of work for me to get in place in this industry, okay, to make sure that I don't miss one truck a day, because if I do, then it stops down here. So if we're gonna do it, I would just assume give them a six-month and just let me...
But Tim, we're still going to need the information on whether or not the Kingston's five.
Whether it's one month or six, we still need the information.
We still need this information, so I say you go out, get the information, find out from Republic if they can do it or not. On the twenty-sixth, we come back, and we have a discussion.
Tim, I want to know just a point, though. Let's assume we're talking about a six-month, let's assume we're just talking about yea or nay, up or down. We've heard their presentation. Originally, you and Charlie thought that they could handle this, this operation, and they're here today telling us they can't, and so if we were to just believe what they, accept what they say, and you wanted determination for the next six months, we would be constrained to tell you to continue the operation for six months. The only way that I personally would feel comfortable not doing that, and probably the board as well, is if you were to tell us they're not correct, there's a way to work it out that they don't see, that you're working with them, and they, we can square the circle and get that done. We don't know that as we sit here today, so given those, that's just the reality that we're facing now. There's, there's no, we didn't want to be in this position, but here we are, and so given the fact that here we are, what do you think is the best thing to do, even from your perspect, forget our public policy now, just from, for your perspective, is it best to give you the six-month extension that you just said is better for you, or is it best to evaluate the situation, and maybe, maybe delegate it to them, do you think that we can pull that off? Because they don't think so.
From an operational perspective, right, that's my job, to move the recycling, to move the...
Your operation, their operation. We don't, we don't want SSR to pile up, even in Kingston.
So from my perspective, it's either you're in or you're out. To play this notion of one month, two months, because when I call Republic tomorrow, because when I call Republic tomorrow, okay, when I'm home with the plumber, and I don't mind doing that, because I got water all over my house right now, when I, when I call Republic tomorrow, the first thing they're gonna ask is how long is, how long is it gonna be, Tim? Because we gotta figure out with our contracts and our head, and our drivers, how long is it gonna be? I can't tell them, well, it might be a week, it might be two weeks, it might be a month.
I can tell you, it's gonna be six months.
And, and so, so when I call, because I, you know, it's flip-flopping with drivers and trucking, you gotta understand the trucking industry, how this thing works.
Tim, I'll say differently. Should we send them back to Kingston and tell them to take care of their problems starting in January, or are we gonna do it?
That's your call, that's, that's not my call, but all I'm saying is, from, from my perspective, is that either you tell them you're not gonna, you're gonna stick to what you're doing, you're not gonna take it, or you're gonna go on for six months.
Okay.
Because, because I, I don't, I don't know, when I call Republic tomorrow, you're gonna ask me.
I'm gonna make it very simple for Tim. We're gonna know by the twenty-sixth, based upon what you think with Republic and what Charlie thinks with the city of Kingston's site.
He can't wait till the twenty-sixth, because, because I gotta tell Republic, and then I might just...
You gotta tell them that it's gonna be either nothing or six months. It's not gonna be a one-month extension.
No, that's not how, that's not how it's gonna work. He's gotta know, I can't tell the guy at Republic, I need drivers in four days. I can't, I can't do that.
Well, no, if they tell you they can't, then there's a whole, that's a whole problem.
Well, then I'll hire somebody. I'll hire somebody, and I'll, I'll run it, but the thing is with the Republic, with Republic, when I call him tomorrow, I'm only giving him two weeks heads-up. I can't wait till, till the twenty-sixth and say, well, you know, I don't know if I'm gonna need you or not, you're gonna have to wait till the twenty-sixth at three o'clock in the afternoon after the board votes on whatever they're doing. I can't give that to him, because he doesn't even know if he's gonna have drivers. He said, Tim, no, I'm gonna dedicate those drivers somewhere else. Those drivers are going somewhere else. I was just in a meeting this morning, and they're having trouble with moving recycling in other facilities where it's all backed up, because there's a shortage of drivers. And that's the reality, and it's coming out the doors. So if I'm gonna line something up, I need to know now. It's two weeks, two weeks to this deadline, so, so I need to make those phone calls tomorrow, get everything set up, if I can.
If Mayor said he would give us a driver, yes?
We have someone that I think could qualify.
Is there any reason why we couldn't use a driver?
We'll have to, that'll have to call, I was in clearing our insurance company, because now we know you've got outside agencies running our equipment.
How quickly could we get an answer to that? Could we get an answer to that?
And, and you guys do road testing, right?
Yes. Okay, so, I'm, is there, if, it passes that mustard, if the mayor gives us a driver, would that stop the issue?
If I provide the tractor here, well, actually, then if the, if the material doesn't move, it doesn't move. That's, that's on that.
It's always one month, every two weeks.
That's on that, so they're gonna have to bring a driver over with the packers.
I don't know how often we go down and put just our stuff, because we have two hundred fifty tons a month. I have forty tons on a trailer.
But whatever the logistics are, Mayor, what...
On single stream, you only get fifteen to twenty.
Whatever the logistics are necessary to get done, can you do that? Can you provide that driver, given those schedules?
So I don't have to worry about any, any transportation.
Fifteen runs a month.
The only thing they're doing is using our equipment, that's easier. Now, if you go that route, that makes things real easy on my end, because then I can wash my hands of it. I don't have to worry about anything other than loading, loading the trailers.
Are you agreeable to that?
I mean, if we can say it.
Sure.
I don't see, I mean, again, this is the kind of relationship we've had with the agency, and we generally try to help each other.
They're shared services, basically, right?
Yeah.
And I don't have to worry about Republic, so I'm not calling in tomorrow.
We, and I still think we, we still should make an evaluation of Kingston's viability.
Well, don't you have to call Republic to make sure they'll take the trailer? They'll take the...
That's more of a concern than anything else at this point.
If they'll take it?
Yeah.
Well, that would be our concern on a monthly basis.
They think we're not gonna be sending anything after this December thirty-first, so.
That would be...
Well, does the city have an agreement with Republic to take it?
No, we have not.
No, I mean, you need to...
We don't have an agreement.
Okay, yeah.
So you need to find out if they'll take the trailer.
I'm sure they'll take it. They eliminate us to two trailers a day, so.
So it looks to...
Y'all, if you need something, I'll, so whatever you guys want.
We're gonna blame it on you, you're gone.
Hey, Jack, Merry Christmas.
Fist fight's all I'm getting, I would want to be here.
I've gotta go and do a wedding in City Hall, actually, so.
So, it's clear you would provide the driver.
Yes.
All right, so we're looking at another month.
All right, thank you.
But when, when can we come up and evaluate your transfer station?
Tomorrow.
Charlie can work with that, and...
Give me a call.
Charlie's... There's nothing to evaluate, in my opinion, because if they're gonna provide the driver, that'll go on for three months. You know, and we're just, we...
I think the biggest issue right now is actually getting the totes, getting them out in play. That's gonna take longer than anything else. I mean, I can get a machine and a...
I don't want, I don't wanna crunch dual stream. It's dual stream, you guys are working on it, I appreciate that, it's gonna happen. The only thing I would crunch is the, is how long we're gonna, who's gonna be doing single stream over six months? You for six months, us for six months, or somewhere between. I know, you guys may feel differently, but I don't wanna beat them up over, over dual stream, it's just, they got a lot of work.
If you're gonna give us the space, and you're gonna load the trailers appropriately, per code, and get them, and all our guy has to do is hop in the cab and...
Take it to Beacon.
And that way, and you know what's nice about that, actually, you know what's nice about that, is if their driver doesn't come over...